Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Townsend, can you do the prayer?
My pleasure. Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve, that we may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek, and keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Now we reach Carver citizen participation. It's a moment where we set aside 10 minutes at the start of each meeting to allow Carver residents to address the board. We ask that you limit your comments to no more than three minutes so that other people can speak. Was there anyone that wanted to speak this evening? Mr. Jermaine? Name and address, please.
Alan Jermaine, 24 Pine Street. I have a statement.
You might want to move the mic a little closer to you.
I have a statement I'd like to read to the board. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Select Board, Mr. Malinowski, Elaine, and residents of Carver. I come before you tonight with great disappointment of the sheer contempt for town meeting vote and comments made before and after town meeting by Ms. Sarah Ewens. Comments like "over my dead body," the Select Board's fiscal misuse of public funds in moving the playground to make way for a new police station and building a new playground 800 feet away on the former King property to enabling the people who made this bad decision, et cetera. I had no problem with Ms. Ewens' desire to have the playground remain in its present location until this statement, "The Board of Selectmen will get rid of our playground over my dead body." The complete disregard of town meeting vote overwhelmingly approving 261 to 77 the police station playground project by a lawsuit seeking to overturn town meeting vote. Ms. Ewens continues to this day to be vehemently opposed to the removal of the playground. I would further argue based on her statements that she was one of the architects of the lawsuit and deliberately refrained from being named a plaintiff instead having her husband, Stephen Dewhurst, take up that role.
Mr. Jermaine, I would ask you to please not make any accusations.
I'm arguing a point, Mr. Chairman. This is going to be entered into the record as it's written.
I would just be, have you be careful about making assumptions.
I've been very cautious in how I've worded this document. I stated that I believe she's in violation of her oath of office as an elected official to the Select Board and remission her fiduciary responsibility to the residents and voters of Carver. The lawsuit was based on a lie that the property was protected under Chapter 97 and the playground was placed on the property in perpetuity. No evidence of that has been shown, and that theory has been dismissed by the court in denying the injunction. Now we find the minutes of the Carver Board of Selectmen meeting from November 10, 1998, which were read and accepted at the November 24, 1998, meeting that tell a very different story. It reads, "Sarah Ewens, Chairman of the Municipal Playground Ad Hoc Committee and Members, Kevin Walsh and Cheryl Herman, indicated that they were interested in the land in Carver." This is an error in the typing, but it's center next to the library for a playground. Mrs. Ewens said that it will not be a permanent structure. It can be moved if the land is needed for municipal buildings such as a police fire station. It is based on this latest find that I would argue that the lawsuit was based on a fraudulent motive and has been perpetrated on the town of Carver. Because of this, thousands of dollars have been spent defending against a lie.
Again, Mr. Jermaine, I would ask you to wrap this up. We're getting close to the three minutes.
Thank you. It is obvious the playground concept was sold to the Board of Selectmen on the premise that it would not be permanent and would make way for a police fire station. Quite a leap from then to the present "over my dead body" and subsequent lawsuit. It is with great sadness and other disappointment that I feel compelled to demand Sarah Ewens' immediate resignation from the Carver Select Board. She has demonstrated actions that I believe to be egotistical and deceptive and were intended to preserve her legacy only in the town of Carver. Respectfully, Alan Jermaine, I have a copy. I'd like this all put in the record. There is the minutes of the Recreation Committee, the minutes of the Board of Selectmen meetings, both meetings from November in 1998. I'd like these added as an attachment. Mr. Chairman.
We'll have to determine how acceptable that is, but you can leave that with the citizen.
Well, Ms. Ewens had her statement entered into the record for the Recreation Committee at her request to have it added as an attachment.
If we can do it, we will do it.
So, thank you.
Was there anybody else that wanted to address the board this evening?
Mr. Chair, may I have a chance to respond?
During Selectmen's notes, if you'd like, but we normally don't have a back and forth during participation.
I'm not having a back and forth. I just wanted to state what my rights are here. If I'm being accused of something, I have the right to 48 hours' notice. I have the right to an attorney, and I have the right to have this in this discussion in either executive session or open session.
Wasn't anticipated, but okay. 7:10, we now have a poll hearing. EverSource and N-Star Center Street, is there a representative here?
Mr. Chairman, I've recused myself from all discussions regarding the solar field that this is in connection with, so I'm going to recuse myself from this discussion as well.
Okay, very well, thank you. If you can give us your name and affiliation, please.
Yes, Donna Howarth representing.
Hold that mic up really close, please.
Donna Howarth, representing EverSource. We're petitioning to install a pole on Center Street, and it's needed to provide service to the new solar farm that's going in.
All right.
That's pretty much it.
Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second for discussion.
Yep, further discussion? Questions from the board?
If I may, my only question, I always ask this question. The abutters have been notified, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry. Yes, I'm in a butter.
Okay.
Okay.
Specifically, I apologize.
Yeah, why don't you come up and sit over here?
I don't really have statements to make. I just, what's happening? Like, there's a pole.
Ma'am, could you explain exactly what's?
We need you to sit and talk into the mic so people can hear you, Louise.
I'm usually pretty locked.
Mr. Chairman.
I've been accused of that.
I was going to ask the same question about the pole, what it's going to be used for, where it's going to go, and.
So, was this already discussed? Did I miss it? I want to bring up.
No, this representative has just come up and requested that the pole be placed.
Great.
And so now we can direct the question that, could you give us a good explanation of exactly where the pole's going and what the purpose is?
If you look on Center Street, and it's between two existing poles, it looks like it's like a gravel drive that heads down to, it looks like a cranberry bog. I didn't walk down.
Right, that's where our house, home, is placed.
Okay, I can actually, and I did take a picture. There's a stake actually that's laying on the ground on the corner of that drive.
So when you're coming out of the bog, it's to the right of the bog?
If you leave the bog, it would be on the right, yes.
I think I have noticed that.
Yes, and that's where the pole will be going.
That's where the pole is going, okay.
And what purpose is it serving?
It's, the purpose will be to service the solar farm, what equipment is needed to.
A little louder into the mic up, please.
To service the solar farm that's going in.
Okay.
And it's just a pole that you would typically see on any?
Yes, it won't look any different than the two poles already there. It's just, you know, there's one here, one there, that drive, and now there'll, you know, be one there to.
That's fine, thank you.
What the Board of Selectmen have the right to do is whenever a pole was placed within the right-of-way at a different location, we then give notice to the abutters to let them know a pole's going to be moved. But it is a standard pole that's going to be going up, and there it is.
Okay, that's fine, I appreciate it.
I'll show you, I'll show you.
Is that me? Say, get out.
Further questions? Mr. Chairman, is there going to be a transformer on that one?
If you give me one minute, I can answer you on that. And I'm going to say no. It's, it looks, does it look like it's going? Because there are three poles being set on the customer's property, and I believe that is where the transformer is going, on one of those poles.
Will there be enough area without?
There'll be an anchor on the new pole that's going in.
Yeah, Bob, normally when it comes to where they put transformers and everything, particularly with the solar project, it'd be a ground-mounted transformer where it's collecting stuff. But where they put poles changes at different times based upon utilities' needs that are there. So our discussion is where the pole's placed. What's in the air rights is not something that we look at because Verizon or Comcast and other things may eventually run wires and other equipment on the poles. It's just the pole itself.
I just want to make sure that it's clear of any trees or anything, so there's no fires or whatnot. It's pretty much a fire issue.
Yes, it doesn't look like there's a transformer being installed on that pole at all.
Other questions? Being none, motion made to approve the placement of the pole. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have a Chapter 61A conversion request, deed book and page 32795. What's PL stand for? Page?
Page one.
Oh, page one, okay. Page one, 1828, page 468, and 1408, and page 69. We have, could you please identify yourself, sir?
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Richard M. Cirque, and I'm here in behalf of Borrego Solar Systems LLC Incorporated, the proposed lessee of land owned by the AD Make Peace Company. And they have received zoning permission in order to construct solar facilities on these sites. Those decisions have come from the planning board, and they've received the necessary permission from the Conservation Commission. Those decisions have been recorded. The plans showing the locust lots have been recorded, and so the next step is to see if the town is willing to decline its option to purchase under Chapter 61A. I already have received, although it's, normally comes later, I've received information from the assessors on the rollback taxes. So I'm here tonight to ask whether the Selectmen will decline to exercise their option to purchase.
Mr. Chairman, I move we decline our option to purchase.
Second. All right, discussion. Questions?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Cirque, I was just wondering, is, this is the project on Tremont Street?
There are three projects. One of them is on Tremont Street, and it's off of Cranberry Road as well as off of Tremont Street. The second project is on Federal Road in the area to the south of where there is an existing solar facility, close to the Wareham Town Line.
Okay.
And the third is on Hammond Street, which is off of Federal Street, also close to the Wareham Town Line.
And these are all for solar installations?
Correct.
And did you indicate that you thought that they, the assessors have indicated they are free of any back taxes?
Well, they've told me what the rollback taxes will be, and so if in fact the board declines its option to purchase, then Borrego will pay those rollback taxes when they're about to build.
Okay.
Because without doing that, they can't build. So it's a two-step process. It starts here, and then it goes to the Board of Assessors.
But these, but it's gone through zoning and planning already?
Yes, it has.
And it's gone through conservation, too.
And conservation, okay.
Right.
Other questions?
Good.
Being none, motion made and seconded. If there's no further discussion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So I'll assume I'll get the, there were declinations that were included in the notice, so I'm assuming in due time you'll sign them and have them notarized and mail to me.
Absolutely. That's correct. Elaine will take care of that.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Chairman, while we're on there, could we just take the Coles property out of order because it's the same exact discussion at the end of the agenda? We received this today, which was 41.5 acres for Alice Cole and her husband to sell their 41.5 acres to Route 44 Development. They've entered into a purchase and sale, and they're looking to close this month. So they wanted to bring this in front of the board to sell. This is, this will leave only two parcels remaining for the developer to acquire. One is, and after the, after this one's done, again, there's two parcels for that. So the developer's been actively working within the boundaries of the urban renewal plan as approved by the Concom and the Board of, and the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen to implement this project.
The board's comfortable taking it out of order?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, discussion.
Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, you go first.
So when I was on the RDA, they had a small slither of property that was in disagreement with that one, and the other two's are the one in between Route 58 and, I forget the name of the street right now.
Montello?
Montello. Those are the other two, right?
So the two parcels that are, the two properties, one is owned by Melville, and the other is owned by an individual in Plymouth. Those are the two remaining.
But there's actually three lots.
And the third one is what we're agreeing to decline to purchase now.
Right.
Well, no, there's four, actually. There's two in between Montello and 58. There's two lots there.
Those have already been purchased.
They have been?
Mm-hmm.
I didn't get that notice.
But you didn't, that wouldn't, they were purchased, you wouldn't have got a notice for that.
I would have saw it from the RDA. So that kind of goes to the fact that I'd like to see what's going on with the urban renewal plan part of this, so we know what's going on at least every six months to keep on what's going on. I know the RDA asked for that. I think we need to ask for that, too.
Yeah, could we get, plan on getting an update at the next meeting?
Yeah, we'll ask the chairman to come in and give you an update when you reconvene.
It'll be interesting to find out exactly what is left in terms of parcels there. Other questions pertaining to this?
Yes, I just wanted to either ask or let people know, this is, this is the Alice Cole property that's largely a cranberry bog. Is that correct?
There's a tailwatering area, there's a cranberry bog, and I believe there's a small house. Alan, do you know?
That's a small house.
I think so, I think that's right.
Rental unit.
Rental unit.
Okay, great, thank you.
There's no further questions?
Just the one, one last thing. I just want to make sure that this was newly put onto the agenda, correct? It wasn't on within the 48 hours.
Correct.
Something needs to be said about that, that it wasn't put in within the 48 hours, so therefore we're covered.
That's right. This was, this came in at the very last minute, and we're accommodating them for the purchase of the, purpose of the sale.
And the agenda does read revision number two.
Right. All right, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. All right, returning to the agenda order. We will go to Select Board Update, and we will start with Mr. Bellman. Are all those notes for your update?
Yeah, look out. All right, so I want to thank the DPW and the Police Department. The DPO fixed up John's Pond really well. Hopefully it helps with the dispersment of water coming down there and get rid of the ruts. And the Police Department has been really good going around checking people's stickers, and it's actually been helping downstairs because they're getting a lot more stickers. So it helps us that way, too. We want the residents to come to the beaches. All right, we pay to keep them clean, keep them neat. We want you guys to enjoy them before any other residents, non-residents, do that. So I want to say thank you very much. Hazardous Waste Day for the district, the waste district, there was some issues with it, and there was a decision made that we would hold two more, one in Carver and one in Marion. Wareham didn't want to run theirs because of all what happened before, but no matter what, they do need five to six employees to help. Just to let you know on cost, just for that one Wareham Day, it cost $36,000 to $37,000 to run a hazardous waste day, and they had a lot. They were there till like 8, 9 o'clock at night, loading up the trucks to get rid of some of the stuff. So just to give you a heads up, and there was 370 cars that actually went through there, and a lot of people got turned away, a little over 100 got turned away, and some people just drove away. So just FYI on that. The farmer's market was, wasn't busy, busy, but it could have been busier. There's a lot of fresh fruit there, there's lobster, and arts and crafts, flowers. I mean, it's a great opportunity if you come down, and they have music. The music was awesome. I want to make sure people understand that while I was there, and I have a tent, and if you guys want to go down there, I'll happily donate my tent to you guys, so you're out of there if you want to come down. But it was good talking to the residents coming in. They did have some ideas, some suggestions, and some comments. I'm just going to bring them back to you guys here. Is economic development. One person was really interested in trying to get smaller business here in the town and was looking for low-interest loans to help with some of the storefronts or something that we could do for businesses to encourage them to come and give opportunities. That's the first one. The next one was, another person was interested in mining operations in the town. Sees a lot of trucks coming and going with dirt, sand from, whether it be cranberry bogs or other developments that are going on, but sees trucks going outside.
Was he thinking of sand, or was he thinking of?
Sand.
Oh, oh, sand, okay.
Sand and, and whatever.
You say mining, I guess I started thinking of like gemstones or something.
Well, that's, that's the comment that was made to me, that it's a mining operation, and that's what I'm bringing back to you guys, and that we should be getting tipping fees for a lot of this dirt that's leaving our town, and if that is a possibility.
Through earth removal, there are. Bob, yes, we do receive tipping fees for that through the Earth Removal Committee. They've been doing that for well over a decade, and it pays for the reconstruction of a lot of our streets, and it's really a model for other towns in the state that have tried to emulate what Carver's doing. It is an agreement that all the growers have and all the large property owners have that's in here, and that's overseen by Gary Garretson, and I would encourage you to go to one of their committee meetings and also to meet with Gary. The money that's collected goes into a revolving fund that's approved at town meeting through our bylaws, and that money is used by John Woods for street repairs on public way.
And that's why I'm bringing this up, so people will understand and know what's going on. It's not just to educate myself, it's to educate the public of what's being done with monies that do come in, because I did know that, but I'm bringing it out to people and letting people know, and thank you very much, I appreciate it. The next one was taxes are too high as a lot of people and the lack of services. That's kind of a recurrent theme with a couple of people. And then affordable housing, that was a big one with one person, that they had said that we need more affordable housing. We don't have enough to keep people here in the town. One was, we need more restaurants. Five Guys would be great.
We've got some vacant space and.
That's right.
They do make a great shake.
We do need more business. Someone asked questions about the North Urban Renewal Plan. I said I would bring that up tonight, which I did, and hopefully we'll get an update for that. What's going on with the old fire station? That was a, numerous people had asked me about that, because it's just sitting there. What's going to happen? We already have the new fire station there. What are the plans with it? No one knows, and it's there, I think people really want to know, what are we going to do with that building? We know the police station, when it goes in, the police station's going to be torn down, and that's going to stay. It's already showed in the plans, but what are we going to do with it? I think people really want to know, what are our plans?
I mean, I think the short answer is, right now, we don't have any intended use for that, but we recognize it's a valuable space, and whether it would be that building or if that building came down and something else went there. But that is certainly, I think, in, as part of our vision of trying, you know, that's a, that space is certainly something that could be put to good use here in our whole town square concept.
Yeah, just to follow up on that, I mean, what the intended use is right now and in the near future is for vehicle and other storage. Right now, the Police Department's using it, the DPW, the Operation and Maintenance Department's using it. It's intended, once the police go to their new facility, that it will then continue to be utilized by the Operation and Maintenance Department for some of their support in keeping equipment out of the sun and out of the weather. Right now, that building, and we did look at this in the past, is obsolete for any type of human habitation, and to turn it into anything, that would require millions of dollars of investment to bring that online for any type of productive use. And right now, we have no bonding capacity or nothing in our capital plan to do that. So in essence, what it's going to be for the next few years, if not longer, until we have money available again, and until there's a plan for that in the future, is going to be for vehicle storage at this time.
Thank you. That's what people want to know. They, they don't know, so they want to know, and that's why I'm here for it. The last one is, and this is going to be a sticking point for some of us, is the TA salary, Town Administration's salary. A number of people had asked me, it says, why does he make so much compared to other places, and knowing that we have other management structure underneath with different department heads and everything, and they're making their money, their money, too. So that was a concern.
I mean, again, that's a question where you can have a discussion, because if I had the opportunity to speak with him, I would point out to the, literally, millions of dollars that have been saved as a result of the efforts of the Town Administrator, which I feel more than offset what he's paid, and in doing, if you did the research, it's in the ballpark of other communities our size. But anyway, not to be discussed now, but we can.
I'm just putting it out there. I feel like if people come to me with questions and I don't know them, then I'm going to turn around and put it out there. Some of the stuff that I made comments to last time.
And excuse me, and I don't mean to debate your, these are your Selectmen's notes.
No, no, that's fine.
So I don't mean to interject myself.
How's the online listing going for posting of boards and committees and stuff like that?
It's going good.
Okay.
So, I mean, it's, when will they be up and?
So what we realized when we went to go do this is that all of our listings have everyone's names, addresses, phone numbers. So we actually, this week, thought of a better way of doing that more streamlined, just to make things go quicker.
Is it a privacy issue, so that all that information shouldn't be there, or?
Everyone might not want their cell number out there, but we do have ideas.
So you're trying to stick to just names and committee, and position of the committee?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
So the goal is to do these lists, run them by the chairman, make sure everything's accurate on all these committees, and then get it up there, hopefully by the end of July is our goal.
The chairman to meet you at the committees.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Executive session, this is, these are my issues here, is that is, I know it was, went to town council to look at, to see, but I think when you have an executive session, those executive session minutes should go to the board first, for us to look at first, and then to decide, bring it out to town council to look at there. I mean, how's the town council? He wasn't here for our meeting to know what we discussed and what we talked about.
Well, I don't think he, I don't think he's checking what it was talked about. He's checking to make sure that the content is appropriate and doesn't harm an individual's privacy that might be mentioned in the context of the minutes.
And I understand that, but the content of that, of what we said in our executive session and what was discussed, we should be making sure that that was accurate before he gets it. That's my.
Probably not unreasonable that the executive session minutes, when they're, I mean, Elaine, you usually deal with the executive session minutes, right? So that, yeah, I think they probably could, just wondering, can they, do we normally, we don't normally send executive session minutes out, I think.
Why don't we go over how it's done?
Well, the reason why we send them to town council is just so they can make sure there's nothing ongoing or could be ongoing litigation wise. If they could be released early, if that would, you know, disrupt anything or have an effect on anything. I think that's the main purpose.
But I think Bob's question is, is there any reason why they couldn't come to us first and then go to council?
I don't see a reason why that specifically can't happen, but they certainly wouldn't be released until town council gave.
No, understood, understood.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We would have to have an executive session to discuss the executive minutes.
Correct.
And they would have to have another executive, I mean, that just, it seems like we were trying to cut, by doing it the way we are, we kind of streamline the process a little bit?
Well, I mean, I.
I mean, I can understand Mr. Belvin's point.
Well, I think, I think, I think it would, what it is, is that it might be cleaner if we saw them first, thinking about what Bob said, because once we go through them and agree that, okay, these are accurate to our, and then they go to town council, then once town council signs off of them, now they're available to be released. So we could almost vote when we review them, that we, we agree to release these minutes subject to town council's amendments, you know, for their purposes, whatever.
Correct. That sounds great.
All right, so why don't we, why don't we sort of reverse the process and give, let's give it a try and see how it works.
Do we need to make a motion on that?
I don't think so. I think it's just a process.
Yeah, just a process.
Yep.
The win, at the Council on Aging, the windows there, is there any plan on maintenance for those windows? For the Council on Aging and their single pane windows, their big ones? They'll cost a lot of money. I don't know, it's CPA money.
You're talking about replacing the windows down there?
Hmm.
You're talking about replacing the windows?
Yeah, they're replacing the windows. I know CPA, depending on how you word the, the grant for the CPA, you got to be careful for when it comes to windows, for replacements, historical value.
What's the issue, Bob?
Well, they're single pane and they're not energy efficient. And I understand that that's an issue with, with that, but there's also.
Historic component tied into that.
Correct.
And you have to follow the historic rules.
Right.
And back in, when the building was built, they don't have double, triple, quadruple pane windows.
Correct.
I think, I think Dave Seidenhoff is sort of looking at the overall, because it's, it's, it's really a tough nut down there because it's not the long-term solution. So how much money do you want to put into it, recognizing it's not the long-term solution? But what are, what is necessary to put into it in order for it to function, well, as for as long as it has to function? So maybe we can ask Dave to include the window issue as part of what he's looking for.
And one of the things I wanted to check is, if we can commit, create a committee for boat access down, right now, down Sampson's Pond, and include the police, the fire department, and some of the boaters that go in and out of there to create a new boat ramp area. And I think that'll help out with the fire issue. If we can seek grants from two different pots, one for dredging the area, give it better water capacity for the fire department, and also fix the boat ramp at the same time, we could basically hit two with one stone there.
We already have a committee for that. It's a recreation committee. They've been working for about a year on discussing putting a boat ramp in. They, they kind of got a little delayed with doing the King Street redevelopment, but they have brought this topic up to CPC. Their intent is to go forward next year, next town meeting and ask town meeting through the CPA to fund the boat ramp. And John Woods has some conceptual, you know, equipment that can be used to put in there so that we can leave the police boat in there for security, but also have it so that when someone's launching their boat, there's a more defined area for doing it versus the free-for-all that happens. And then they can tie their boat off after it is launched. So that is being done by the Recreation Committee.
And I understand that, but talking about the fire department having enough supply of water for them in an area that they prefer to have an area dedicated for them to bring their fire trucks in, to pump out the water that they need and have a dry, an area, especially in, if we lose a lot of water due to the environment, that that's a possibility of doing that, too. So just looking at two different ways, trying to kill two birds with one stone. The library maintenance for paint and rot and the AC, I know there was an issue for the AC unit. I was wondering, I know there was money put in for the AC unit. Is that still moving forward or?
So, I mean, you're getting into a bunch of technical maintenance things for buildings. And as I've always offered, I'm more than happy to meet with you and go over all these and give you an update of where Dave Seigenthal is on this. He has a priority list of things that is being done in the town that's on the list, as well as other buildings, and they're getting to it in orderly fashion.
Didn't the money that was set aside for the air end up going to the police station?
We have, but there's a study going on for what the actual needs going to be and that that would come back. But Bob's also talking about the exterior of the building, which is also something that has money available. And again, you know, we have a small town, we have a small workforce. As we know, we have six people running the town from an operation and maintenance standpoint. We now have seven. And, you know, these guys do a yeoman's job, guys and gal, do a yeoman's job of doing work. And like I said, I would encourage you to, if you have specific questions about building maintenance, we can address that, you know, in a more detailed fashion.
But this is some of the issues that not only I have, but other people in the town have too. And they want to know what we're actually doing. And this is a great dialogue that we have. So people can see that we're asking questions and the answers are getting put out there. So that's what this is for.
Absolutely. And again, I would encourage people, if they have questions, to come in and ask those questions.
It's easy to ask them in this format because you can get the broader spectrum of people knowing what's going on than just this. So thank you very much, Chairman. I'm all done.
Okay, Ms. Hewitt.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a couple of things. I went to a SERPED meeting the other day, the Southeastern Regional Planning and Economic Development District. And just a couple of things came up that I think might address a couple of Bob's concerns here in town. One of them is that we, it's an assistance that we could probably ask SERPED's help for, and that would be to do a Smart Growth Zoning Overlay District. This is, this comes out, the Smart Growth Zoning Overlay District Act comes out of Chapter forty R, which I'm just going to read you what it says here, seeks to substantially increase the supply of housing and decrease its cost by increasing the amount of land zoned for dense housing. It's also includes a high percentage of affordable units. And it actually has all income levels in, in the housing. It's just more of them are affordable. So I think that's just something that we might want to ask Regional Planning Agency if they could help us with. Ultimately, it's the planning board that does that, but we, of course, would be considering it and recommending it at a town meeting.
Is that something you've shared with the planning board?
Not yet. Nope. I just went to the SERPED meeting, so.
Okay, thank you.
The second item is, might possibly address Bob's question about meeting with the Crystal Lake and Bates Pond residents, and maybe go a little bit beyond that as well. And this is a program that, according to SERPED, they have already started, this program is underway in Carver and it's called the Complete Streets Application of the Complete Streets, it's a long name, Complete Streets Needs Assessment and Prioritization Plan. So according to SERPED's documentation, they've already started work on that. And what I'd like to request maybe is if they, SERPED could come to one of our meetings in the near future, just talk about what that is. I mean, you can read about it online, but it would be nice, like Bob said, for folks at home to be able to hear about it and see if there's any way we can include those two neighborhoods.
Are they working in conjunction with any town departments or is this something they're doing on their own?
I'm, I'm, it sounds like, it sounds like the planning department started it because that's usually, that's typically where these things come from. It could have been through the transportation people, like John Woods and, and the public.
They're working with the planning board and with Stephen Cole when he was here. Our new planner starts next week.
Right.
So he'll be controlling that. And the other program you talked about, Sarah, too, is also beneficial for communities that have public sewer that can do dense housing. You know, when we don't have sewer, it kind of limits our ability for doing dense housing. But again, that's, that's something that our planning director would be overseeing and meeting with SERPED on these issues.
Yeah, I think it would be worth having, you know, we haven't had SERPED in a while, so I think it would be worthwhile putting them on the agenda.
I just think it would be nice to have them come in, talk to us. They're working also on the pre-application for the Business Park Development. Presumably that's the urban renewal area. So I'd like for those to, I'd like to hear from them, essentially.
Fair enough.
Yeah. The other thing is, I have the goals and objectives somewhere here. Here they are. We talked about a number of goals and objectives. We selected the ones that we chose. And I'm just wondering, at what point, it was just a question. I know we can't really, you know, make a decision, but at some point, I think we really do need to talk about the goal and objective number two, which was three on this list, improve communications with the public, town hall meetings, email updates of activities, et cetera, as well as the other ones. But I think that one also goes to what Bob is, is pointing out here, that, you know, people have a lot of questions. And we had said at our last meeting that these are things, you know, we could work on these. We didn't have to have separate working meetings. We could just work on them in our meetings. So I'd like to see that start.
Yeah, I was actually going to suggest at the August meeting that the goals, as they've been recorded, would get distributed to us in the, this intervening month. And then we set aside a portion of the agenda just to discuss the ones that maybe we want to focus on for now.
That's great. That's good. Last thing is, I wanted to wish everyone a safe and happy Fourth of July. And I was speaking with a veteran friend of mine who pointed out that sometimes, that typically, you know, there's, it's great to have the celebration, but that there are veterans who might be put off or might have PST problems. And really, it's very unnerving to some of them to have it, have fireworks going off like right outside their, their houses or their windows. So his phrase was, to have a celebration with consideration. I kind of like that. Thank you.
Mr. Dunham.
I don't have a list. I'm sorry. I apologize.
It's not required.
Oh, okay. Did want to, like Sarah said, wish everybody very happy and safe Fourth of July. Remember fireworks are not illegal, but if someone were to happen, go out of state and use them, make sure you use them safely. Also a reminder that coming up on the twenty-seventh of the month is Carver Old Home Day. Clambake, a lot of great music and, you know, it's just a chance for the people, you know, the residents to get to meet each other and have a good time. It's fascinating to see some of the old timers that come back for that. So keep that in mind. That's the twenty-seventh, right?
Yep.
Okay. And.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And other than that, that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Townsend?
Thanks. Just a few things. I want to recognize Ben Diogenes for all the work he's done on his Eagle project up at John's Pond. I was up there the other day and I'll tell you, between his project and the work the DPW has done up there, it's absolutely, it's in beautiful shape. So, so thank you, Ben, for that. I also wanted to mention Carver Old Home Day. It's such a, Carver Old Home Day is such a wonderful event. If you're a resident, you haven't been there, please stop by because it's just, once you go, you'll come back every year. Selectman Dunham and I attended the Budget Sustainability Study put on by the Finance Committee last week. And I'll tell you, Steve Pratt put on a presentation, I think you'll agree, it was like a, like getting a doctor in municipal finance. And I just want to really compliment him for that and the job Alan Germain, the chairman, did. It really was a excellent, excellent event. So I, and I urge everybody, I think it's in all our packets. And so if you didn't get a chance to, to see it, look through it. It really was, Steve did a tremendous job with, with everything he put together on that. And I just want to mention quickly, my next office hours are going to be July tenth, from ten to eleven in the morning at the Council on Aging. So if you have a ti, have a chance, you haven't been able to stop by in the evening, stop by down there. And I also want to wish everybody a happy and safe Independence Day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just, did we decide that we were going to get Steve's presentation onto our, the town website?
Yes. It's on the Finance Committee.
So it is going to be out there.
That's where it's going to be.
Just to let people know that, because it is, like Mark said, it's a great history.
If it's not there now, it will be put out on the Finance Committee website.
Right.
Okay.
Because it's a great history of how we've gotten to where we're at and some of the challenges we've had as a town.
Very good. All right, thank you. I will just bring you up to speed that the Cable Advisory Board has been meeting in anticipation of our renewal with our Comcast contract, which comes up on October nineteenth this year. We reached out to Fios and they have absolutely no interest in coming into town and competing against Comcast, so that the negotiations are going to be forthcoming. However, one, one sort of, the leverage we have a little bit is all these streaming, streaming companies out there are putting some pressure on cable companies to remain competitive. So we have that to work for us. We are hoping that we're going to be able to actually get at least one of our channels on, as an HD channel, as opposed to everything being on the, the others. And that'll clean up a lot of what we see. We are getting financed, paid for by Area 58 Studios, which I'd remind you is a combination of the towns of Halifax, Plimpton, and Carver. We'll be getting a new remote system here, which will allow Peter to present us in much crisper images with good microphones. And we should, on a regular basis, actually show up from when we start to when we finish. Another thing is going to be that we've had to take, have the camera take a picture of the TV to show what's on the TV. Now it's going to be tied into the system. So people at home can look at a, at a good crisp picture of what's going through there. And so that there'll be a public hearing for the Comcast renewal in September. We're meeting with Attorney Hugh of Copelman and Page this month to, we've already got a proposal in from Comcast. We'll be going through that. We'll be looking for input from citizens as we go forward. So that's, that's where we're at with the cable renewal. And then I will just mention again that the Carver Lions are partnering with the Friends of the Carver Council on Aging this year for their golf tournament on Sunday, August fourth. We really need a lot of foursomes to come out and support that. So just contact the Selectman's Office or get in touch with me directly. I shouldn't say the Selectman's Office. Please contact me directly. And if you're interested in supporting that effort because the Council on Aging really appreciates support and the Carver Lions, the bulk of the money that we raise goes into helping members of the Carver community. Okay, we will move now to appoint Planning Board alternate position.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. With the elections, obviously this town is, has a deficiency in getting people appointed to committees. We have a lot of vacancies. With that, the alternate position for the Planning Board had to step down when she accepted the position of Town Clerk. Since that time, we've been trying to fill that position and we finally just had one applicant come into that. So we have one applicant in front of you.
What's the pleasure of the board? There is no pleasure of the board.
Well, I just think, because I don't have that in my, it's not coming up on my page, so I just don't even know who it is.
Was there?
Thank you.
Was there any reason why the applicant couldn't be here?
We just haven't asked people to come for appointments.
I believe she was notified.
She was? Okay.
She was what? I'm sorry.
I believe she was notified.
She's on the Recreation Committee. I don't know why she didn't come, if she was notified.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask questions?
Yes.
Okay. So when was this position actually posted? Because I didn't see it on the Selectman page for it to be posted as a position that's open and available. That's my first question. My second question is, when did an alternate position be voted in by the voters of Carver? Because I checked, going back into the records of the town reports, and I found that the Planning Board was created and it had five members. And it took me some time to go back and figure this out. But they voted for five members. Never was said anything about alternate positions for this. And then I looked at the laws and it doesn't say anything about alternate. Says you can, I think you can have up to nine members, but the town voted for five. So, and since it was a vote by the town meeting, in order to expand that to alternates, that would have to go to town meeting, too. Just like if we created a committee here, we could then increase it or decrease it through our body because it was done through us. But being a town meeting created a committee. So that would be my question is, number one, when it was posted, so everyone knew that this position was available. And the second one is, is when was it put in, enacted by town? was available. And the second one is, is when was it put in, enacted by town meeting to have alternates?
I think it's a great question, and we'll ask the chairman of the Planning Board to answer your questions.
All right, so we'll table this for now, then?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, the question has come up about since Friday is, as July 5th, the day after the Fourth of July, and it's a half a day normally for work for town hall and library personnel. Did we want to consider closing the town hall and the library on Friday? And that could be done in a number of ways. We could do that and essentially just grant additional holiday time to the employees. We could request that they, that they could take it off, but they'd have to make up the four hours in comp time. Mr. Town Administrator, do you have any other ideas as to how this could be approached?
No, this, this came from the different workers in town hall and the library. And, you know, given the configuration of where the holiday is, and that it would fall the day after the holiday on a Friday, which is normally open four hours for town hall and five hours for the library, it was requested that that be extended, similar to what the town does for the day after Thanksgiving, which is on a Friday, so we don't open that half day, and the day after Christmas, which is on a Friday. Well, Christmas can, can change based upon the year, but Thanksgiving is always on a Friday.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the town hall and library being closed on July 5th.
Second.
Further discussion?
Mr. Moderator, I mean, yeah. Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry about that. I reverted back.
Three-minute time, red, white, red, yellow, green. Go.
All right, let's go. So I just want to make sure that if we're gonna be closing this, that the employees don't have to use their own time for this, their own sick time, vacation time, that is a comp time for it. How is this going to affect them?
If we're closing it, then it's closed, and there wouldn't be, see, many people take it off, so it'd be a skeleton staff anyway. So if you're taking the day, if the town hall is closed, you're not, none of your time is accrued.
It's like we're rewarding an additional holiday.
I just want to make sure that that's clear, for the employees to know that this is...
So anybody that requested to take it off would be given their vacation time back.
Their time back.
Does this, does this include the DPW? And, I mean, how does this flow? Because you say just the town hall and...
DPW and Public Safety work on different schedules. They work on 40-hour work weeks, and they also work on five and two, and it's a different type of schedule. It's town hall and the library that work on the 35-hour work week with the partial days on Friday.
Okay, thank you. Motion made and seconded. Further discussion being none. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. All right, we did the solar tax agreement.
No, no. So, Mr. Chairman, the first one there is approved dispatch MOA for FY '20. We had this initially in executive session, but we've already discussed it in executive session. And the union agreed to what the board had requested, that they get a 1% COLA added to their FY '20 one time for the Dispatchers Union, and they did agree to that. Anything else on that, Alan?
No. Basically, what happened, this was, there was a wage reopener, for those who don't remember, and, for the public. And so when the non-unions got the 2% COLA for this year, FY '20, they requested the wage reopener. They gave us an amount. We came back and said, "No, it's only 1%." And they said, "Okay, fine and dandy." So that's what we're agreeing to here today.
And this is something you had brought back to the board, that we had authorized you to proceed with.
You authorized, the board authorized us to go to, offer them 1%.
Correct.
And again, this was posted in the executive session. Since we need the executive session, we put it here so you can ratify it.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. Further discussion?
Was this one of the added options that was put on the agenda? I don't remember for, because it changed, the agenda changed.
Well, it was on the original agenda.
Well, it was there, it was gonna be originally under executive session, and then it was realized it didn't have to be executive session, because we'd already had the executive session dealing with it. It actually was authorized.
And they agreed to it.
So it was a change within 48 hours, but it was intended to be dealt with tonight, because we would, after voting in executive session, we would've come out of executive session to vote in public session.
Again, I just want to put it out there to everyone.
Bob, if they'd come out with a counteroffer, as opposed to accepting ours, then we'd have to be doing it through executive session again.
Okay.
And again, Bob, for public record posting, it was posted tonight in executive session, well before the 48 hours, and just we reshuffled it within the agenda.
No, that's fine. I just like it to be put out to the public, to let them know that, hey, it wasn't on the original one to discuss it. Now we're discussing it. We're putting it out there, ratifying it. And, thank you.
All right, like, I have one that I printed off last week that does not reflect that on there. So if someone had picked, done the same thing, they wouldn't have that listed there.
Right.
Okay. Again, we did the solar project. So Town Administrator update?
Nope.
We still got a vote.
I'm sorry.
We have motions, but we didn't vote it over.
Motion made and seconded to approve.
Okay, and that's for the 1% COLA?
Yes.
Right. And that was approved?
Well, you haven't voted yet.
We're voting now.
Vote now.
Yes. Further discussion being none. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, the next item is for a solar tax agreement for Zero Hammond Road. That was one of the properties for the make piece. This is one of the many projects that we're working on. This is a larger project, 2.4499 Megawatts DC. This has been approved by the Planning Board, by the Conservation Commission. It will go into construction next year. And based upon our tax agreements, this will yield a 20-year tax agreement that fixed $238,833 per year, which would be the terms of this agreement. We will use the same contract that we've always used for these, subject to town council's final review there. And again, this one would follow the town policy with our financial policy, that a third is, is put into our unfunded liabilities, third is put into long-term repairs for, and for a new middle high school, and then a third is put into the budget by reallocating money that was originally sent into our capital and debt stabilization plan into that. So again, this is, this is a very large project, and...
What was the annual figure, again? So that's gonna open up some nice money into the operational base.
It will. And if you look at it from the standpoint, we all know how we used to worry about the $55,000 that was there for personal property. You know, this'll move about $80,000 into the operational base.
But we probably won't see that for another year, right?
That is correct. This will not be in, this is not in our FY '20, and we may get a portion of that in our FY '21 budget when we go to do that.
But it'll be pulled by FY '22.
That's correct.
Okay.
No implications for the FY '20 budget.
I just want to make sure that was clear, so people don't think, "Oh, we've got it now."
Excellent.
That it has to wait till the project is completely built and online before we get all the money.
But it does help with our fiscal planning.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Right. Does someone make a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Further discussion?
I looked at one of the other agreements that we've had, and I've read it all over. And it's standard, the only changes are the numbers, and that's it.
Numbers and company.
Company.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
And date.
No further discussion. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Now, Town Administrator update?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have many, many updates tonight.
There's only one listed.
No, it says Town Administrator update.
It says update on downtown projects, plural, and financial sustainability of town.
As I mentioned, Jim Walsh, our new Planning Director, no relation to Tom Walsh, will be starting next Monday. We're very excited to have him move forward and join our team. Second, we have the senior survey. They're gonna have all the results inputted by Tuesday of next week. We have well over 1,100 surveys that have been responded to. That's well over 25% of that population. It's gonna yield some great data. Once the input has been, been put in there, and again, it's a huge success, the consultants will be working with the survey committee to tabulate the results and provide a summary of those. I would anticipate at our August meeting, on August 6th, is we'll get a preliminary report on some of the major findings that come out of that, as well as a follow-up discussion probably in our September meeting, when everything is completely analyzed. Again, huge success on the turnout for this, and we anticipate this is really gonna provide some good information moving forward. We also have an item that's been worked on for the last year-plus with the Board of Health, is the Board of Health is going to be moving forward, because the Board of Health is in charge of solid waste for the town. And they're going to be putting together some more detailed regulations. They've been working with town council for a while on, on prohibiting illegal dumping in the town, that will have noncriminal citations on per occurrence, and then they get larger if there's more than one occurrence. In addition to that, and also working with the police chief for the last couple of years, we will be putting in where there have been incidents of illegal dumping, trail cams. And so that it would give the police the ability of, and again, these will be on public property, where there may have been illegal dumping in the past, and it will give the police...
Should we really tell them we're putting in trail cams?
Sure, maybe it'll stop them from doing it.
Absolutely. We're not gonna tell them where. It's a big town, and there's a lot of public property in the towns. But those, those will be going out. And again, this is all in anticipation that in the future, there will be some changes made for trash pickup in the communities, and we wanted to make sure there was enough deterrent, so there would be no illegal dumping in the town. Let's see.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Excuse me, I'm sorry. With those cameras, I know the Conservation Commission, they actually have a set policy on trail cameras along their areas. So just an FYI, then they have regulations.
Regulations that need to be followed.
Yes, they have rules and regulations.
Correct. It has, it has to be more than 20 feet away from a trailway or a roadway, I think that's what they said. I'm just going by my memory for that, so just to be aware.
In other words, I gotta check with them.
I, actually, I don't think that that applies to public safety.
I'm just...
I'd have them check to make sure.
Yeah.
I mean, personally, I, if you're in public, it's a public place, anybody can put a camera up and video grow it, anyone in public. So I think the, the policy itself is illegal to an extent for it, because it's town property and it's a public place. But no matter what, they do have regulations.
This morning, the Police Building Committee had a meeting, and we had a discussion with our architect. Things are going very well. We had most of the geo-tech testing done this past week. They are gonna be going back for a couple other test pits in the next week or so. And we're on schedule to release the bids in August, early August, it looks like, that'll go out, again, following the same process that we've done with our other building projects. I think I had forwarded to the board some of the MVP action grant summaries, executive summaries, on the cranberry industry, and also on fire water supply. One of the interesting things that's come out of the cranberry study that they've looked at with, you know, this whole issue of global warming, is there's a certain number of chill days that's required before cranberry buds, and the cranberries can actually harvest properly or grow properly. And those days are getting shorter year by year, which is what the crops have been moving up in the timetable. So there's a big concern that at some point, there may not be a long enough window of chill days for cranberries to properly go through their growing cycle, which is in their detailed report that they've talked about. But they have that there. This morning, when we had our department head meeting, one of the areas that we talked about is the town has done extremely well in many of our reorganizations, whether it's the consolidation of the Planning Department with the Board of Health Conservation and Building Inspections Department, whether it's the Operation and Maintenance Department, which includes DPW facilities and school facilities, whether it's the IT, townwide IT, or our Finance Department with Treasure Collector and Assessing and Accounting. What we're also gonna look to do, and I'm gonna bring in a consultant to help me with this, and some of you may know him on a temporary basis, is Dan Badger. And what he's gonna do is kind of help me coordinate, looking at our social service and our cultural and our recreation agencies, our Council on Aging, also look at affordable housing. How's this all gonna tie into our senior study that we've got all these results in and actions, you know, not to, just, just look at how all of our different agencies in those categories can better coordinate like we're doing with our other branches of government. So that's gonna be ongoing shortly. The last thing I want to do, and I have just a very quick slide, well, it's not quick, unfortunately, it's a slide presentation that Bill Herriman had put together, following some of the slides that came out of the playground, I'm sorry, the Recreation Committee. And let me just talk a little bit about the Recreation Committee. They met last week. And with that, they're about 90% complete on their final design for the playground on the King Street property. Those final plans, with a couple tweaks, are going to be made available next week, for about a week. They're gonna be at town hall, and they're gonna be then on the evenings on Friday, and on the weekends over at the library, so that the public can come in and take a look at them and kind of identify what equipment they like more or less than others. At the completion of that, at their meeting sometime this mid-month, which is probably gonna be the 18th or the 17th of July, the Recreation Committee is gonna take its final vote on the equipment, which will then go into ordering. And Dave Segantoff and I will oversee the ordering of that equipment. We're gonna be moving forward next week with putting in the parking lot drainage, and looking forward to implement all of that. We anticipate that this will potentially be under construction in later August, and then into September for the playground, depending upon the timeframe that it's gonna take to order the material. Also, at discussion with the Recreation Committee, and one of the things that we want to bring back to the Board of Selectmen at a future date, once the police station is done, and once the King Street, King property is fully developed into its park complex, is to ask the Board of Selectmen to go through the process of making that a permanent park in perpetuity, so that that rectangular area where all the fields will be at will maintain a park, so that there's clear intention that that's what's gonna happen. You know, this is a park that we're gonna be spending, you know, so far, $600,000 that Town Meeting has approved. And if it goes into other phases, it'll be a larger number than that, and with the full intention that this maintains, this is not a temporary facility, that this maintains a permanent structure going forward. So if I could, just go to some slides real quick. Try to crank this over. Peter, I got you. There we go. Okay, again, Bill Herriman kind of put these slides together from what was done. The committee, the playground commit, I'm sorry, the Recreation Committee is pretty much meeting weekly or bi-weekly since January. With that, as we know, funding was approved in April to replace the 18-year-old playground, and their goal is to do something that's gonna last for generations. We have two professionals working on this. Tom Linden is the landscape architect, who has done many recreation complexes. And we've also hired Nancy White, who is a professional playground consultant. She was also utilized in the existing playground that was built next to the library, and has decades of experience, and really knows how to put these together. They've been meeting pretty much every Wednesday, and, and again, just trying to move this whole project forward. And then on July 17th is when they're looking to actually vote on the final project. Any questions should be addressed to Mary Ross. And, and one of the things that needs to be clarified is that everything that we're looking to do is to create a fully handicap-accessible playground with new equipment. And where possible, we're gonna reuse equipment that's at the existing playground to move to the new playground. There will be some items that won't go to the new playground, and we are gonna find potentially different spaces around town, whether it's at beaches or at other ball fields, where there may be some single pieces or multiple pieces of equipment that can be utilized and moved to those other facilities. Again, accessibility is an important factor, and there's a real big focus on encouraging co-play with children with similar... co-play with children with similar ages, whether you have some accessibility issues or not. This is kind of a quick, you know, big picture of the site. I think I have a laser pointer. Yeah, look at that, I do, laser pointer. This is the existing ball field that'll have a new infield put into it. This will have a 10-foot fence along the back area, and then this is where the play, the sandbox will go. Parking will be in this area, and you're going to have, you know, a lot of swings and activities built in all of these items that are numbered on here.
Is that one of the ball fields that's being reconfigured so that it doesn't have the direct sun?
No, that would be the field to the north of this. Assuming my geography piece is right, to the top of this is that field. This field will stay in its current configuration. The other field, you can see, kind of, here's the outline of it. Once that's turned around, it's actually going to open up some additional land here for a future phase of the redevelopment.
To the left.
This is the parking.
Right, but past that is another field over there.
This is the field up here.
Where is the...
That's one field. There's another one off to the left, I have to...
This is, over here is the softball field. So, the police station's right here.
He sort of turned around. It's a different...
So, they did reorient it.
With this, where is the actual food stand?
Right here.
That located.
The softball field is to the right on that, when you walk, you know, to the back.
We have bigger plans, I can show you in the other room. So, let me go through some of the equipment. This is one of the items that they're looking at, and, why is this video not working? One second.
Rubber on slide, bit error. May have to get rid of the laser pointer.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to do. All right, so, all else fails, do this, restart it. We've lost the laser pointer, hopefully. There we go. So, this is one of the items that they're looking to purchase, which is this Reflex item, which is like a long salamander, and you can see how it's all, so it's a lot of activities for the kids to do. They can walk and climb on it, they can go back and forth, jump on it, and it encourages multiple different age groups on this Reflex piece of equipment that they have shown in the planned setup. And I would say that little boy or child is having a lot of fun. And, again, just some of the new, the new stuff that's on the market these days for kids to play with and be part of. Here's a spinner for a handicap-accessible spinner, so on the rubberized material there, they can just wheel right on it and spin right next to it. This would be a non-handicap spinner. What they're actually going to do is have those in close proximity to each other, so that, again, there's more commingling of kids that they can participate, whether they have a disability or not. Lots of climbing activities that are being done. Every piece of equipment that I'm showing right now is in the plan. Spinner, we're going to have some xylophones, we're going to have Congo drums. As part of the sandbox, there's also a raised sandbox that they're looking to do, a sandbox table. These adventure gliders, another view of the adventure gliders, swings, the seats and everything may change slightly. Custom play equipment. It'll be multifaceted and have many different components to it, such as roller slides, sliding poles. This is an example of a roller slide, so each one of these yellow pieces is actually a wheel that spins around, so you're sliding down the whole unit. Play structures, maker climbers, again, transfer stations for those with disabilities to be able to participate, tree climber. These sky pods are very popular with the kids. This is, we used to call them jungle gyms, I think, in the old days, with the monkey bars where you went across. Well, this is the new version of monkey bars these days, where the kids, you know, can step on this thing and swing across, and you don't need as much upper arm strength, so it's more compatible for all genders and athletic ability. Sliding poles. There's going to be telescopes for kids to look at on the site. Again, more dynamic pads and structures, play panels, where there's different alphabets and puzzles and stuff to put together that will all be accessible. Cargo climbers, doorknob jams. Again, here's a more, this is a more athletic version of, and you can probably see, like, here's the doorknob pieces that are over here, so it's almost like, kids can use this for multiple training pieces that are in there. We've got some nature play, which, this would be like a rock structure, that's more of a fiberglass-type structure that's built and composite for kids to play on. There will also be some play stumps, natural fork logs, the lizard log, the gecko rock, the bison rock. We're going to get new X cavators. These are the diggers that you can use standing up or with a wheelchair. New riders, and, again, this is all the equipment that's being presented. You'll be able to see this all next week. The committee will be voting on this on September 17th, and, again, you know, as Bill Harriman says, it's, the amount of work that that committee's done to put this all together is, has been a tremendous undertaking over the last, you know, six, seven months that they've been at this, and their effort really shows. So, that's what we should be seeing shortly.
Thank you.
Anything else, sir?
Nope, that was it.
All right, we come to the minutes. Do we have any minutes before us tonight?
I think there were. No minutes tonight.
No.
Okay.
Don't think so. It wasn't in the agenda.
And we already took care of this sale, correct?
Yeah.
So, our next meeting is on August 6th, and in September, we return to our regularly scheduled meetings on the first and third Mondays of the month.
Tuesdays.
Tuesdays of the month. This aging process is not being kind. So, that being said, I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
You guys are very quick when we get to this stage in the meeting.
Right with it.
We're professionals.
Any discussion? Being none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. Everyone have a wonderful Fourth of July and a safe one.